Please rise for the play.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening and welcome. Today is April 11th, 2016.
Aaron, Kupferos?
Here.
Whaling?
Here.
Coleman?
Here.
Basil?
Here.
Meyer?
Here.
You have the minutes from partnership 28. Any additions, changes? If not, is there a motion?
So move.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any questions to motion? Call call.
Aaron?
Yes.
Kupferos?
Yes.
Whaling?
Yes.
Coleman?
Yes.
Basil?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Is there anyone from the audience that wishes to address the board?
We do wish to address the board, but I'm waiting for our girls from Beecher Soccer Field. They're on the way.
We have the village commissions tonight, and just so you know, after the commissions, I'm gonna change the order so we can get the individuals that are here tonight for specific person, purpose, and out. So the village commissions, the beautification committee, Tricia.
Yeah.
Tricia.
We're having a meeting tomorrow here at the village hall at 7 o'clock.
Fourth of July commission, trustee.
Yeah, car, Fourth of July car had been purchased except to the approval of the board. We're working on the storage shed, which looks to be being pretty successful as far as working under cold conditions. Other than that, that's it.
I'll check more on the wire mark.
Dodge.
Yeah, right here.
Yeah. Okay, consider a motion authorizing the award, award of a bid for the purchase of a 2016 Dodge Challenger from South Oak Dodge in the amount of $24,999. Bid sheet tab is enclosed. Some bids were received and opened on Monday, and at Thursday night's commission meeting, a recommendation was made to the village board to award the lowest bid. Want to make a motion to accept the bid of a 2016 Dodge Challenger from South Oak Dodge.
In the amount of $24,099.
Second.
There was a motion made and there was a second. Any questions to motion? Call call.
Meyer?
Yes.
Basil?
Yes.
Coleman?
Yes.
Whaling?
Yes.
Kupferos?
Yes.
Aaron?
Youth commission trustee.
Last Saturday, we just had our mom's sundance, which was extremely successful, and that's all I had to report.
For those of you who haven't been at any of these events that we host in the village, no matter what the commission is, like basically the youth commission, I highly recommend that if you can, stop by. Sure, first of all, they would appreciate us, appreciate that we attend, and it's somewhat amazing what the commission's to work, you know, do, they do. So if you have a moment when we have an event, urge to stop by. Ribbon of hope, trustee Beano.
The ribbon has been built and is being painted. Insulation this spring. That's all I have to report.
Historic preservation trustee.
Nothing to report this month.
Thank you.
Did you get your $2,000 budget?
Got it. Thank you very much. Maybe?
Maybe.
Okay, we're go back to the audience and Kayla.
Yes. Thank you. Members of the board, my name is Kayla, she's on the community. I'm a community member. Bear with me. I come to you not only as a community member, but also as a parent who has lost a child who suicided nearly five years ago. We lost our son to an illness. Although undiagnosed at the time of his death, we believe that he was struggling with depression. Depression is a mental illness. Not unlike cancer, diabetes, or heart disease, you could say it's an invisible illness, but it is no less deadly and real. Untreated, depression is the leading cause of suicide. Studies show that over 90% of people who die by suicide have a mental illness at the time of their death. Looking back, I have come to know after searching for answers that the signs were there. It just wasn't on our radar. We never thought such a thing could happen. Sadly, we didn't know about the risk factors that are characteristics, nor did we know about conditions that are, that increase the chances that a person may take their own life. One week prior to our son's death, we had taken him to B E R for extreme chest pains and shortness of breath. We now believe it was an undiagnosed anxiety or panic attack. At that time, they told us they could not find anything wrong. All test results were negative. We were sent away. During that time, our son did not express words or thoughts that brought concerns to our mind of his, for his well-being. We will never get the answers to our why questions. We cannot change what has happened, but by bringing awareness about mental health and wellness to our community, it gives great hope of keeping others from ever suffering from such tragic loss. It is okay to talk about it. We need to break the silence and start the conversation. Mental health matters. So we have teamed up with the girls soccer team from Beecher High School along with our S S A kids, and we are going to be bringing awareness to our community. And I introduce Maya to you. I'm sorry, Mia.
Hello, we're here to talk to you about our soccer game that's gonna go on April 25th. There'll be Varsity and J V playing. Varsity will start approximately at 4:30 and followed by J V, which will start approximately at 6:15 to 6:30. We're here to break the stigma of mental health awareness. We're here to break the silence. We're here to make it okay to talk about. We're here to talk, like, have people be okay to talk to anyone, that make it a big thing. We have a shoot for the troops game also, and that it's a big ordeal. It's raising money, but this is raising awareness. We have T-shirts, we have ribbons, we have beads, we have even little rubber ducks with the symbol on it. Like, we are so happy and excited to support this and to make it a local thing. We wanna raise the awareness, we wanna make it okay to talk about, not just, you don't have to be quiet about it and hold it in. We want you to be local about it, and it's a friendly, open event. Anyone can come. It's, we have shirts going out. We have over 150 orders already of shirts, and the whole soccer team is wearing shirts before the game, and that will be our uniform for the game. The lime green is the color, as you could tell by the ribbons. But we are making it local. We want everyone to be okay to talk about it. The S S A group is also helping out during halftime.
Okay, S S A stands for Safe School Investors, if, I mean, you didn't know. We'll be selling shirts and lunch for all the students to buy. They're $6 each. We want to make it affordable for everyone, so everyone's wearing green. And during halftime with the varsity game, some of the members of S S A will be giving speeches on one of them. We're just trying to raise awareness overall.
But it's not just some people. It's in fact, it could be anybody who's affected, any age, anybody. And we wanna make it okay for everyone and break that silence, as, and we wanna be helpful, and we want the rest of Beecher to be able to help us express this to everybody. Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Couple, couple questions. That's Monday, April 25th.
Yes, that is.
The varsity?
Varsity game's at 4:30.
4:30.
That's our first event. This is all building up momentum leading to a giant parade walk, which we're inviting everyone to come and join us. We'll have a floating parade, raising awareness to the masses of all the people that come to our community.
Okay, and you wanna do the lime green ribbons around the tree trunks for the month of July? And then after July 4th, you take it down?
We can do it sooner than the Fourth of July? That would be awesome.
You wanna do it two weeks before the Fourth?
Absolutely, that'd be, that would be wonderful.
And then you'll take them down after the Fourth?
Absolutely.
Does anyone have a problem with that?
No.
There you go.
And then we will be putting out a post on the local Facebook pages to just encourage people to support the efforts, and T-shirts will be available for anyone who wants to wear our mental health lime green, red shirts.
Thanks, audience, for coming. Did you win today?
Don't ask that question.
The inning was going.
We put in a valiant effort, but came up a little short.
Thank you.
Appreciate you telling me.
Thank you.
And good luck.
Thank you.
And varsity.
Treasury report, please.
Our balances this month are, for village accounts, are $1,797,441. For the general fund was, this is actually March figures, $597,070. These are both increases over the past two years. So we are doing very well with our funds. The only expenses that we have in, that have shown predominantly in the commissions and special accounts is the storage building that was spoken of earlier, Fourth of July, and then also the steel ribbon was purchased, which is, which is also mentioned. And that's what I have this month.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the treasurer's report and report of financial activity for March.
Motion.
Second.
Motion and a four, and there was a second. Any questions to motion?
Just one comment, the M G M S group account, it has a high brand in it. And I think buddy needs advice or rip wrap yet, finish that bid, but then I'm gonna close that off, remove that leftover remaining building structure, which, uh, both sides.
So they're gonna, we'll have to close that, and eventually?
Eventually, it's gonna be, we need to get rid of that M G M S account.
Okay.
Any other question? Call call.
Aaron?
Yes.
Kupferos?
Yes.
Whaling?
Yes.
Coleman?
Yes.
Basil?
Yes. Variance reports are closed for your review. And then the bills. There are a few additions from what was sent earlier. An extra one from Arrow Labs. Some energy bills, ComEd and Constellation Energy. It's like a Cree Ace Hardware for street department supplies. Computer repair. Bacon Pharmacy shipping charges. H D Waterworks supply, storm sewer drains, oh, for the concession stand and storage building. Hornet jobs for Lions Park and Fireman's Park. Sander service and oil change. Not too many changes, and USA Blue Book Public Works water sewer supplies. So I'd like to make a motion approving the bills for March in the amount of $132,782.91.
Motion and a four, is there a second?
Second.
Questions in the motion? Call call.
Meyer?
Yes.
Basil?
Yes.
Coleman?
Yes.
Whaling?
Yes.
Kupferos?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes. The referendum for the half percent public infrastructure sales tax was approved on March 16th, with the results being certified by Will County Clerk. If we approve it tonight, this ordinance will go into effect on July 1st, 2016, with the first disbursement arriving around October 15th, 2016. So I would like to make a motion authorizing ordinance number 1239, adopting the half percent public infrastructure sales tax.
Second. There's a motion and a four, and there was a second. Any questions to motion? Call call.
Aaron?
Yes.
Yes.
Whaling?
Yes.
Coleman?
Yes.
Basil?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yeah, would you like to?
We're seeing an orange grant, a special use permit for the Beecher Library District, 560 Penfield Street, for an L E D monument sign, P Z C by unanimous vote, for an L E D sign, as submitted, subject to the following conditions: day/night switch, dim light, four lines of terrace. Sign would be a brick monument sign located in the same location as the current post, time/temperature sign. And then the name ordinance imposed. I'd like to make a motion granting ordinance number?
1239.
1239, granting a special use permit to the Beecher Library District at 560 Penfield Street for an L E D monument.
Can I understand your comment? It's 660 Penfield.
And the ordinance says 660.
Okay, all right, so that's correct.
Pay forward. There was a motion. There was a motion and a second. Any questions to motion? Kayla made a motion, and Scott's second.
Meyer?
Yes.
Basil?
Yes.
Coleman?
Yes.
Whaling?
Yes.
Kupferos?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
Thank you very much, and from the board library trustees, we would like to thank you for your support. We think that when this project is finished, it will be an effective spot here on the corner, and certainly welcome, because everybody has missed, been missing the time at Beecher. So thank you very much. We appreciate you.
Especially while working at the park, at least to know what time, what the temperature is. John, would you like to do a presentation?
Sure.
Cool, thanks, you all.
Yeah. Derek, you wanna go ahead and share about yourself?
Jump in?
Yeah.
Okay, well, thanks for having me here tonight. Derek Gold, thanks for having been talking about the wastewater treatment plant facility plan. So thanks for having me here tonight. I also like to thank John and Greg, Bob and Frank. We've had several meetings to go through the facility plan, the recommendations, and when we had a site visit to the village of Plainfield last Friday, John and Frank came along, and we met with their operators, and they got to see some of the equipment we're proposing for, for your treatment plant. So hopefully it was a good kind of hands-on experience for them to really see in person some of the equipment we're recommending for, for your project. So tonight, I've got a short presentation, just gonna kind of run through what a facility plan is and why you do a facility plan. We'll talk briefly then about the existing treatment plant, and then the recommended improvements, and I'll kind of walk through the treatment plant process and explain the highlights, and feel free to jump in with any questions. I don't wanna bore you with too many details, but I'll go over the overview and feel free to ask any questions. And then I'll go through the schedule and the costs and the next steps for the project. All right, so first, what is a facility plan? A facility plan is a term used by the EPA for any project that looks at your wastewater treatment plant, evaluates the existing facilities for its ability to treat current and future flows, looking at the equipment condition, and then also identifying existing regulations and upcoming regulations. And I think that's one thing to keep in mind, is the regulations from the EPA are getting tighter and tighter and tighter. So a number of the improvements that are recommended for the project are to comply with not only current regulations, but ones that we know are imminent, so that you don't do a project and three years later, we come back here and say, oops, there's another regulation coming. So this is, everything that we know that's coming on the horizon will be addressed by this, by this project. So why do you prepare a facility plan? First, to give you a roadmap, an idea of the costs, the schedule for the project, and helps you with, will help you with your budgeting over the next 20 years. It also will, a facility plan allows the village to be eligible for I E P A loan funding, which is how you funded the project back in 1996, was through a EPA low interest loan. And I'll talk a little bit more about that in this presentation. I gave you some quick facts there on the side of this slide. The last major upgrade was 1996, so believe it or not, it's been 20 years. We did do a facility plan in 2005, a lot of growth was happening at that time, and a number of the recommendations in that report are included in the current project, but new regulations have been added to that, as well as, that was 10 years ago, and a lot of the equipment that didn't need to be replaced at that time now has reached its useful life. It needs to get included in this project. So that's kind of the scope of this facility plan, was, was to look at that existing facility condition and then the regulations that are upcoming. So the, the current plant is 0.6 or 600,000 gallons per day. It's an activated sludge process, is what it's known as, for nitrification, to remove ammonia nitrogen. That was the major reason that the project was completed back in the 1990s, was to nitrify the plant. The sludge that's generated by the process is treated using an aerobic digestion process that stabilizes the solids and then allows it to be able to apply to the farm fields. It's currently done using a liquid process. When the flows get high and it rains, there is an excess flow pump and a pond to store that flow, and then trickle it back into the treatment plant after the event. If it exceeds the capacity, and I don't think that's actually happened, then it can't go directly to the creek and gets treated with just chlorine. But I, I don't believe that that's actually had to happen. The ponds didn't big enough to hold out the excess flow. The N P D S permit that you currently have, that's National Pollution Discharge Elimination System permit, that's granted to you by the EPA, and under which the plant is operated, contains a number of limits, including B O D. It's biochemical oxygen demand, ammonia, suspended solids, and D O. So those are the four major components of, of your current permit. I am showing there a picture of your current return activated sludge pumping station, and I'll talk about that in a little bit. That's been a, one of the items we've talked at length about during this project. So the, the recommended improvements are generally to rehabilitate the existing equipment that's reached the end of its life, and to comply with new regulations. And also, the plant when it was originally designed, was designed capable to increase the capacity to 1.2 M G D using the existing oxidation ditch and adding another clarifier. So that was thought of back in 1996, when the plant was constructed, was that the expansion of 1.2 M G D would not require a significant amount of new tankage.
We're, we're over at 0.6 now.
Correct. Currently, your, your last, your last year, you're actually above your 0.6 limit. Now, that doesn't mean that you're violating your permit, because the, the plant has actually been running extremely well, and has actually been able to treat more than the 0.6 and still meet the permit limits. So John Sweeto, who's operating the plant, is feeling comfortable that, that right now it's running well, but any sort of growth or additional flow, it's gonna be difficult for the plant to treat it. So it's running well now, meeting permit, but it's at capacity.
Right, and the new operating permit we received requires a lot of the things that we have to do with this rehab.
Correct.
Within 24 months from.
36 months.
36.
Yeah. Yeah, the, what Bob's referencing then on the right is the, the new N P D S permit the village has received has some lower limits in it, and also requires disinfection. This is actually something that I've been negotiating with the EPA for about 10 years, saying, oh, we're gonna do disinfection, oh, we're gonna do disinfection. Well, U S EPA has actually changed its rules, pushed it out of the I E P A, and now here we are. Disinfection's gonna be required. They've said that's enough dragging your feet. This is required now. Disinfection will be done using a U V process. And then phosphorus removal is going to hit every plant of the state likely.
And I, I will make this very simple for the layperson.
Yep.
It costs more to flush the toilet than it does to fill it. Much more. Just put it in perspective. So you don't even know about phosphorus and all that. It's just, that's the key.
Yep. Okay, now I'm gonna do, you should have a, an exhibit in front of you that shows this one. There's two exhibits. One is for, if you really wanna geek out on wastewater, that's like these circles and arrows and everything. So that's for reference later, you can ask questions. The one I'm gonna use for tonight is this one. It's the, this is kind of the site map. It's got the lagoon on the, on the right side of it. So, stand up, walk through. So the way the plant currently lays out, the flow enters up here in the upper corner of the plant. That's where the raw sewage pumping station is located. As part of this project, the pumps will be replaced, the controls will be replaced, and larger pumps will be installed in that location. The flow then is pumped over to a screen located right here. That screen just separates solids out from the flow, 'cause you don't want chip bags and rags and that sort of thing that get into the sewers, getting into your wastewater treatment plant. So that's all that does, is just remove debris, and that's located right here. That was not included in the, for example, the report back in 2005, but 10 years. That is a really harsh environment, and that, that screen is on its last leg. So that is included to replace that screen and its controls. From there, the flow then flows into this oxidation ditch. This is really the heart of the treatment plant. This is where the B O D and the ammonia is being treated, and this is where all the biological activity is occurring. The way the plant was originally designed back in 1996 is this outside ring of it, so there's three rings. The outside ring is currently used to, to store sludge. It's gonna be converted into treatment, a treatment train. So what'll happen is there'll be new treatment units put on the outside of that, and then the whole ditch will be sized to treat 1.2 million gallons per day. The flow then goes into the splitter box, which will be, will be refurbished to allow the inclusion of a third clarifier. The third clarifier is being put in so you don't have to put in sand filters, which are a more expensive process to maintain and operate. So again, back in 1996, when they looked at it, there was always space left for this third clarifier to increase the capacity. It'll also help you meet the phosphorus limits. From this point, the flow goes, will go into a U V disinfection. Again, that's being added. That's about a 40-foot-long channel with U V units. We had a chance to visit those out in Plainfield. It's really a, a nice process for the operators to use. There's no nasty chemicals. It's not hazardous. It's just light bulbs, basically, in the flow that sterilize, sterilize the bacteria that are going through there. Not yet, not killing them, sterilizing them. So that's the U V disinfection channel here. From there, the flow gets metered, and then it'll go off to the creek. So that's the major flow. These clarifiers, so you've treated the water here. The clarifiers are there to separate the water and the liquid. So the liquid passes on, gets disinfected, it goes to the creek. The sludge that collects on the bottom settles to the bottom of the clarifiers. Now you gotta do something with that. Part of it is pumped back with this pump station that's right here. There's a pipe that goes to there, and it gets pumped back to the process, and you reuse the bugs. But the bugs make more bugs, and those bugs turn into sludge, and that's this return, this waste-activated pump station. The waste-activated pump station takes the extra bugs and bacteria that are made, and that becomes your sludge and is pumped over to the digester. Now, these two pump stations I mentioned have been talked about a lot. They're old structures from the, one of the, some of the oldest in the plant from the 1960s, I believe, or early 70s, and.
The metal cans?
Yeah, the metal cans.
I wanna say early 90s.
Early 90s?
Yeah, or late, late 80s, when I first started here.
They, they were before the 1996 project.
They were before that.
Yeah, they were before that. So if you look at them, they look pretty rusty, and there's been some issues on the bottom of them with rust and pumps vibrating. Our initial thought was, geez, these things are getting old. They don't look to be in great condition, and we were thinking that you're gonna have to replace them with new pump stations. But we came up with an idea. We got somebody who specialized in looking at metals, and they did some forensic analysis on the metal and said, actually, if you sandblast it and recode it, the metal's still good for a long time. So that's gonna save the village upwards of a half a million dollars or more. So we're able to reuse those existing structures, so that's, that's a big deal. So that, those tests are completed recently, and we're able to incorporate just rehabilitation, new pumps, but the structure itself, you don't have to dig any new holes or put in concrete, which would have been expensive. The waste-activated pump station then pumps the sludge to the digester. The digester stabilizes the solids that we put on the farm fields. We'll have another blower to blow oxygen in there to do the treatment, and all the guts of the digester will be replaced. And then finally, well, two other processes. One is on the sludge storage. Right now, it's currently either stored in this outside ring or put on some drying beds. A three-belt, belt filter press will be installed to compress the solids and make it into a cake. We saw that again at Plainfield. It's a real dry-looking, almost like Play-Doh material. That's a lot less expensive to put on the, on the fields, right? Kinda look like Play-Doh a little bit?
It looks like it.
Gets, gets, gets put on the, nobody's eating dinner, right? Gets put on the farm fields. It's, it's less expensive to do it that way, and the volume is greatly reduced, so you don't have to have all this storage. We'll store part of it inside the old Public Works Building, where the press will be located, and then the rest of it will be put on the old sludge drying beds. Again, I mentioned phosphorus removal. There'll be a chemical feed building. We got a chance to take a look at, at Plainfield's. It's basically a fiberglass tank with some pumps, and it'll feed alum into the process, which precipitates out the phosphorus, and it goes in the sludge, so it doesn't make it into the water on the discharge site.
At what point do you enter that gap? Where, where's it going?
There's a couple places. Plainfield actually puts it upstream of the ditch. Other places put it downstream of the ditch, and I think that's something during startup is John Sweeto will, will really have to work and optimize that, so they, it's important to do that because you'll use, use less chemical then. Every plant.
I said, is I don't know if I like that chemical, chemical feed building there where you have.
Okay, that can be moved.
Yeah.
That, that's just a placeholder. We'll, we can move that to a new spot.
Access it with a vehicle to, to, just to put the chemical.
That's what we were thinking. It's right off the driveway there, because you can have chemical deliveries then. It's a big tank, and a tanker will come up in Philadelphia. And then the excess flow pump will also be rehabilitated or replaced.
Yes.
And we've talked about moving the one from the school down to the treatment plant, and then putting the new one up at the school. So that's something we'll, we'll look at, but one new pump is included. So that's kind of the scope. Any of the, any questions on that one?
What do you do with the, you know, the sludge storage? Is there a smell to that? I mean, you're going to be storing these cakes of dried sludge.
Right.
What do you do in that case?
Yeah, it's got a little bit of a musty odor. I mean, we were in the, the sludge storage building at Plainfield. It's not very odorous. It's actually, produces less of an odor than the liquid that you currently have, so I would think it's gonna be. I, I would think it's gonna be less odorous than what you have now. Right now, you're storing it in this outer ring, and that could produce some odors. Here, it's really more of a dry material that'll be in the beds and in the Public Works Building.
The sludge drying beds is where you'll get most of your odor. Inside that building, it should be okay, and if your sewer plant is running right, it shouldn't have.
Uh, yeah.
When it, if you smell odor to sewer plant, that means there's an operational problem.
Yeah, it's a good point, 'cause if, if it's not running right, you're right, Scott, it could produce some odors, but when it's running well, it's got a real mild musty kind of odor, but you don't smell it more than, I don't know, like 20 feet outside the doorway of that building.
It wasn't a strong smell.
You can smell it outside of the building. You can smell it.
It's gonna stink.
Yeah.
Keep it inside.
I mean, when you're inside of the building-
Yeah.
And that's all that's in there for years, I mean, yeah, you're gonna smell it.
You wouldn't smell it, they had the overhead open, and until you actually walked in and into the garage, you couldn't smell it at all.
The key is to keep odors from leaving the property. I mean, with this process, you have the most likelihood of doing that. When you use the open old sludge drying beds, if there was a problem with the turnover of the plant, especially with change of seasons, right now is the trickiest time to run a plant, and the temperature's changing, going up and down, it really affects the microbiology of the plant, and that's when you get an odor. So, hopefully this process, and, and increasing the capacity of the plant is gonna reduce the risk of odor as well.
Right.
'Cause if you're running over capacity, you know, plant ain't running right. Sorry.
No, it's, it's good. Okay, so-
Can I ask a, just a quick question? How do you get rid of that stuff? Are there farms usually?
Yeah, currently, we, we put li, we land, we land apply liquid, and it costs us four cents a gallon to have it haul, you can put on a farmer's field. The problem we have is storage of the liquid. Okay, we're storing that stuff at 12% solid. I think it's about 12% is usually your typical liquid sludge. With a belt press, you can take all the water out of that sludge and compress it down to 96, 97% solid material, and it's a lot less to haul out to the farmer's field, but then they can, they could apply it with a, with a knife or a manure spreader or something of that nature. And, and our volumes will be a lot less, so operationally, our hauling of liquid sludge, we're spending about 15 or 16 grand a year just to haul liquid out of a plant. Hopefully, that cost will go down some. But the complication of this process is gonna cost us more to operate. I mean, it's just gonna cost us more for that to do. But it, it goes out to the farmer's field. Roger, help takes most of it. But we have to get a license for that, we have to get a permit, and stuff has to be tested for metals, and it's a very complicated process.
Okay, there's a, a memo that's got all the detail that, of all the, um, of, of all the, uh, improvements that are included in the project. Uh, I ran through the, the highlights here. The, the total project cost is, uh, $9.2 million, including contingencies. Uh, we've talked to Bob and kind of projected what an annual payment for that would be, and it appears that that is slightly above what the, the village could afford budget-wise. So what we've talked about doing is, is moving forward with the full project. We've been talking about needs and wants, and going forward with the full project and bidding it, and we'll see what bids come in. If we get some good bids, and actually, the projects that, that Baxter Woodman's been doing this year have all been coming in 10 to 15% below budget, which has been good, then, you know, you can afford the project. And, uh, we'll see what the bidding environment looks like next year. So that's the way we would recommend moving forward, knowing that your budget's a little bit less, well, let's start up here, and then we'll include some deductions in the project to say, hey, if it does come in a little bit higher, we won't do some of these items that are maybe more wants than needs. So there's a few of those items in there, like a, a generator, backup generator for the plant. Currently, if the power goes out, the generator's very small, it can pump the flow, it's got enough juice to pump, but no other treatment. Well, it would be really nice to have a full backup generator to run the whole plant, that's typically what's done during a power outage, but, you know, that's 300, $400,000. You know, if the, the, the project comes in hot, it's one of the items to look at.
And the committee would probably need to discuss those issues if we go through.
Yeah, I think we'd go into some more detail at that point. We're pretty preliminary right now. The, uh, IEP loan, so the good news is, I was down in Springfield a couple weeks ago and I stopped in to see the finance people. Uh, the current interest rate is, is 1.86%, which is obviously a very low rate. And, uh, one of my concerns was that, uh, you know, if her interest rates may be going up, and I asked them what the current status was, and they said, well, the rate's gonna change July 1st, and that's new for this year, it used to be on October 1st, but they've changed their fiscal year, so now it's July 1st, and the rate's gonna change, and they said, actually, right now it looks like it'll be about 1.82%. And that's good through next June 30th. And my ears perked up and said, geez, if we can get rolling on this, then we could take advantage of a 1.82% interest rate. And, um, so I wanna walk through the schedule right now, that would need to happen, that's aggressive, but doable, um, because that interest rate, I, I, nobody knows what rates are gonna do, but I guess that 1.82 is about as low as they're gonna get, I, I think they're gonna start going back up again. Um, so the, the major milestones and next steps are, one is to submit the facility plan to IEP A. You've just got a brief memo in your, uh, in front of you tonight. That report is a, you know, inch-thick report with all of our analysis and recommendations that needs to get submitted down to IEP A. We recommend doing that next month, get the ball rolling on the review, uh, start the design then as soon as possible. I, I know that's concurrent with review by EPA, but I don't expect many major comments from them, this is a pretty straightforward project for them. Um, and get started on the design, because that's about a eight-to-10-month, uh, design. Because of our familiarity with the plant, we can get rolling right away on it and, and look to, to be, uh, save some time there, and, uh, be complete by, by next February with the design, and then submit for permits, receive a construction permit next May, and awards next May, and, and award a contract then. Submit those bids down to IEP A and then receive a loan offer from EPA next June. So that gets you in before the June 30th, 2017 date, after which that rate's gonna go up again. That's a 20-year loan rate. Uh, construction then would start in July of 2017, and complete construction, most of the construction would be done by fall 2018, but there'll be some restoration then for the fall and spring of 2019. You don't start making payments on the loan until six months after the project is complete, so your next EPA loan payment wouldn't be until fall 2019, earliest with this schedule.
And then the first payment would include the capitalized interest.
Correct.
So the first payment would be the highest of all the payments, the level of offering. Uh, the one thing that is of concern to me when we look at this accelerated schedule, when we take advantage of the 1.2, you're gonna need 600,000 to pay for the design by February of 17. Um, we only have 300,000 available. The plan was to take the money that we would save by not paying off the EPA loan, 'cause EPA loan was, our old loan is gonna be paid off in December of 16, is we would accumulate another 300,000 in calendar year 17 to pay. This accelerated schedule is gonna require what they call a bridge loan, because EPA is going to pay us that 600,000 back in loan proceeds for the design, but you gotta front the 600. So in spring of 17, the finance committee is gonna have to approach the banks and ask for a $300,000 bridge loan. It'd be a short-term loan, probably 12 to 18 months, I don't know what the rate could be.
Yeah, or, or less than that.
But I just, let me know, if you wanna follow the schedule, you're, you're gonna have to short-term borrow, 'cause I, I, there's no way I'm gonna make it on the budget. I'm not opposed to this schedule at all, I'm just letting you know we're gonna have to borrow short-term.
Originally, we had talked about extending the design over another year, but then you're at the mercy of the interest rates going back up. And I, I think whatever you pay on a interest rate on a bridge loan, and I, I think it'd actually be more like six months to 12 months.
I'm being said.
You're being said, I know. The, uh, the first-
And all these things go.
The first reimbursement from EPA, so you start construction in July of 17, you would, the first thing you would do is ask for the engineering design money, uh, back as a first payment. So you would expect to receive that on the schedule in August, September of 27.
What scares me is they might want to give them the rate for us, but the review time. Do you really think the EPA can comply with that schedule? I mean, with the budget crisis and the staffing that they have, I mean, are they gonna be able to give us timely permits and review?
Uh-huh, I think so.
You do?
Yeah. Yeah, we, we've got a good working relationship with the EPA.
That's gonna be the key, you can keep to the schedule.
Derek, you mentioned this, this interest rate of 1.82 as of July 1st, that's good for one year.
Correct.
See, on June 30th of 17.
It, it changes based on the, uh, 20-year GO bond rate, and, and so it just tracks, it's half of that rate. Um, so as that rate goes up, the interest rate will go up. And it's every, every July 1st, it resets.
And I, I would like to see 1.22 for 20 years, and 8 million, that's pretty nice.
That's significant.
Yes. Huge. The, the, the interest paid on that bridge loan is nothing compared to what you're gonna pay on this.
Right, yeah, I finished that one. Yeah, whatever you pay on a bridge loan. We just worked with another client in the Peoria area, the same exact thing. They did a bridge loan for, uh, today, I think they took it out for about, it was about six months, to finish the engineering and then get reimbursed right away.
So the collateral is the repayment by the big one.
Right.
Cover the bridge.
Right.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't have any, you know, just a couple of comments. I mean, we, we went down there, uh, the movement thing was very interesting, the belt press thing was extremely interesting. Um, there, there are some things that we're gonna need to consider as a board moving forward as far as manpower, 'cause belt press is not something that you just walk up and you hit an on button, and it, it's gonna run like the rest of the plant. You know, this is, this is something that needs to be manned and ran. Um, I mean, there's, there's some other things, you know, a few other points to bring up. When we first started talking about this project, it's one of the very preliminary stuff that we all seen, when we were looking at this budget-wise and, you know, we're all very appreciative of Bob being, you know, very conservative on his numbers that he gives us that keeps us all in line. Uh, but, I mean, just an idea of how important this is, is that when we first started, the very preliminary talks about this, we were figuring everything at a 2.5 interest rate, where we eventually then started reworking our numbers down to a 2.25. I mean, just to give us an idea of how important it is that, you know, the idea as to why we're trying to escalate this and, 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 uh, speed this up to, to be able to capitalize on this 1.82 rate. I mean, it's, it's a big difference in what our payments would be, you know, especially with looking at what we first looked at when we first started figuring this and looking at numbers of a 2.5 interest rate. So, I mean, those are just a few things, there, there are some things on there, I mean, there's not a lot of wants that can be cut, I mean, pretty much everything in here is, is a need. Um, a lot of the warrants we've already kinda eliminated and, you know, and did some research on as far as, um, with the pumps and stuff like that and the tanks for the pumps. So, I mean, I, I, I'm, I'm all for moving forward with it, I mean, it's the right thing to do. We'll cross the bridge, well, when we come to it, I guess.
Derek, thank you. Matt, thank you, appreciate it.
What do, what do you expect, another update? Like, I would assume we have to sign a contract with you to do the design work, that's probably the next step.
Yeah, I think, well, the next step is now I wanna finish the report, um, and get that to the EPA, and do that around May, and then, yeah, the design would be-
So we can sign a design contract and begin that before we even have approval of the phase one?
Correct, correct, yep. So that, that would be, I'm projecting June, but I'm gonna say the sooner the better, because with the EPA approval process, the sooner we can get started on that, gives us more time on the backend.
My suggestion is to get a contract with us as soon as you can, so we get it approved and then, you know, begin the design one.
Okay.
'Cause I don't wanna see this 1.22 go to 2.09 or something, because, you know, I'm still gonna need a bridge loan, and we're 2.09, so let's make that deadline of June 30th.
Right.
Of next year.
Which is a new, again, a new deadline, it used to be September 30th, they're just changing that right now. So this is hot off the presses, this isn't even on their website or anything.
Right, and you have the announced capabilities to take us through the legal and the financial part?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Good. Let's move.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Coleman, item number 10.
Yeah, consider an ordinance authorizing the village president and request the same emergency participation in the regional emergency operations plan, excuse me, for Eastern Will County. A full copy of the report was provided to you under separate cover. This is a regional emergency preparedness plan that replaces the local municipal plans since all agencies provide mutual aid to each other in the event of a disaster. It will allow for seamless transition into another community since all the protocols will be the same. We're asking that this be adopted Monday, so, next, and on Tuesday, we will actually be putting the plan into action into a regional tabletop exercise. Uh, this time, I'd like to, um, have an ordinance authorizing the village president to request the same emergency participation in the regional emergency operations plan for Eastern Will County.
Your ordinance number 1240.
Second.
There is a motion on the floor, and there was a second, any questions, a motion? Go ahead.
Eric?
Yes.
Coleman?
Yes.
Coleman?
Yes.
Hazel?
Yes.
Fire?
Yes.
Consider a proposal from DeYoung Equipment in the amount of $9,080.28 from the Capital Equipment Seeking Fund to replace the 2013 Skid Steer Loader with a 2016 model. Um, this will allow us to maintain a bumper to bumper warranty, um, and this will also allow it to be placed in the schedule of replacing the loader before any maintenance fees arise. This kinda falls along the lines of the tractor that we moved on last month. Think, just to give everyone a quick summary on this, it, it's, it's basically a list on this new skid steer of 57,000. The trading on it, um, what we have is currently 35,000, which is, I think when we look back on it, it's about $3,000 more than what we even paid for, um, because of our discount that we get. So that's where this whole thing kinda works out well, where the discount that we get that we're able to purchase this equipment at, usually three years later, by the time the warranty's up, the trading value is almost at, or if not better, than what we even paid for it. So we're able to capitalize on this and get a brand-new one for the cost of $9,000. I know, I spoke with Marcy about it, uh, she's comfortable with how we're doing this. I think, uh, if we do continue to plan on that, uh, doing this every three years, if it works out this way, then just be some figuring out on the, the right way to figure